All right, it is 5:30, so we'll go ahead and get started with the city council study session for Thursday, February 27th. This is the one that we had to cancel last week, so catch it up. We've got one item on the agenda, and it is the Aime-Norman Comprehensive Plan Update, specifically the Stormwater Master Plan. So we have representatives here and committee members also to help lead us to that discussion.
Thank you very much. Do you want to give us a?
Yeah, so thank you so much for having us. My name's Amanda Nairn, I'm chair of the Stormwater Subcommittee and an Aime Steering Committee member. This has been a great process. We've had a really great team. Well, I thought we had our committee members up there. We had a lot of great expertise of people who have served in many capacities regarding stormwater in the past, representatives from the development community. We have the water quality head of DEQ was on our committee, so as well as young professionals that work in the field. And so we're really happy to be here today, share our recommendations. Sorry that we got rescheduled and there's not more people here, that's a shame, but we're around to answer questions. And Alan Dennis here with Garver is going to give the presentation, and we're happy to have a robust discussion afterwards. I also want to thank staff, they've done a great job managing this. As you all know, this has been really a huge undertaking for all city departments. So it's been great, and we hope that you have some great questions and are pleased with recommendations that are going to be coming to you soon. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Amanda. I do want to just shout out how amazing it's been to have Amanda on our team as a Stormwater Subcommittee Chair for this process. Just having the Subcommittee in general has been just excellent, just to get the public, but also technical input into this plan. It's been really invaluable. And also Stormwater staff, Michelle, Jason, Scott, have all done, just really made this something that can really be used going forward. They're going to be the ones who are using it, taking these recommendations and implementing them. So I really appreciate Amanda, Scott, Jason, Michelle, all of the input that the Subcommittee has given us for this. It's been truly just a great experience. And like Brett said on Tuesday, doing all of these plans at the same time is really unique. It's not something that I've heard of before. You'll kind of see how Stormwater interacts with some of the other plans throughout this. But if you have any questions about that towards the end, just let us know. And so we'll just go ahead and hop into this presentation. So here's the agenda for the meeting today. We're going to talk about some of those stormwater issues that face Norman. Many of those are things that have been talked about quite a bit over the past 15, 20, 25 years. We're going to talk about what the purpose of the Stormwater Master Plan update was, then some items that have been accomplished since 2009, things that were either recommended or projects that were identified in 2009 that have been accomplished, and then what is left to do, and then what's new, what are we recommending as a new recommendation for 2025? So first thing we want to talk about is what is stormwater? So the biggest thing to know about stormwater in Norman is that it's, there's a ridge line that kind of goes from the northeast to the south, from the northwest to the southeast side of the city, that divides the Lake Thunderbird watershed from the Canadian River watershed. And so just the way that things have developed over the years, since the beginning of the, or the settlement of the city, most of the urbanization has happened in the Canadian River watershed. That's where we have most of the impervious area, those streams that have been really confined. We have a lot of issues there with flooding and erosion because of that, those confined stormwater paths. And then maintaining aging infrastructure is also important there. And yeah, so the priorities of stormwater for the city are divided between these two watersheds, because these two watersheds are very different, and the behavior and the topology of these watersheds are different. So on the Lake Thunderbird side of the ridge line there, preserving runoff water quality obviously is a huge deal because we drink out of the lake. Our primary drinking water source is Lake Thunderbird, so preserving that water quality and then maintaining the natural areas. There's lots of natural riparian areas. When I say the word riparian, that just means stream bank, the area that's really close to the stream bank. Those natural riparian areas are really important to preserve. So when people hear the word stormwater, a lot of times the first thing they think of is like a concrete culvert that conveys water from one side of the road to the other. This is the downstream apron of Imhoff Creek as it crosses Imhoff Road. And this was the big project on Imhoff Creek a few years ago, where my three-year-old is playing there in the bottom of that. That is the big concrete apron that was replaced. And so when that bridge project was going on, that was replaced. But that's not all that stormwater is. It's also detention and treating stormwater. So this is the detention pond in front of City Hall. So maintaining, you know, making sure that that water is slowed down as it goes downstream, making sure that these, you know, detention ponds don't flood other buildings, things like that is also important for stormwater. And as well, the stormwater quality and stormwater management side of stormwater. Yeah, the stormwater picture for Norman. And so making sure that pollutants are not excessively running off into our streams and into our lake. I've got a picture there of the lake, and you can see, you know, a couple of feet down into the lake, and that's not usual. But that's what we want to continue, that's what we want to maintain, is low turbidity in the lake, as low as is feasible, and also reducing the pollutants like phosphorus. That snippet I have in there is from a brochure that Michelle's team put together, talking about stormwater quality in Norman and how we can all work to preserve stormwater quality by reducing phosphorus and nitrogen and other pollutants for enhancing water. So a huge part of this effort was gathering public input. And so we have kind of aggregated some of the results of our open house meetings and our public surveys, online surveys that went out to the public. And we basically asked people to rank, what would you say is the highest priority for you when scoring a project that is related to stormwater? And so that 58% of the respondents said that ecological improvement is their highest priority, their top importance in evaluating a stormwater project. And then public safety was the next highest rated item in that list. And so, you know, the citizens of Norman are really focused on preserving ecology, preserving natural waterways, preserving green instead of containing stormwater down to a narrow, you know, that's kind of the old stormwater management strategy, is contain it into a smaller area as possible, and don't worry too much about what happens downstream. But obviously the citizens of Norman think more of, how can we preserve the more natural riparian zones in our city? So next slide, what's the purpose of the Stormwater Master Plan Update? You know, we have a great plan that was developed in 2009, so what is the purpose of this update? First of all, I want to highlight how great the 2009 Stormwater Master Plan was. It was truly kind of a masterpiece, and there was lots of cutting-edge and revolutionary ideas that went into that. Some of those have been implemented, but it also identified a pretty vast need for more funding for stormwater in Norman. And so we wanted to take that, you know, excellent plan and kind of update the science for 2025, or 2024, 2025. We wanted to make sure that the priorities of the Norman citizens and of the Subcommittee are reflected in that, and then also identify potential policy changes that need to be included with these proposed land use changes. You know, this is being performed in the context of updating the land use plan and the comprehensive plan, so making sure that those land use changes are anticipated with our stormwater recommendations and policies. And then we also just updated the goals of the Stormwater Master Plan overall. So some of the things that have been completed since 2009 that were identified in that 2009 plan, first, there was a Water Quality Protection Zone Ordinance. I'm going to kind of go through each of these with different slides, so I'm going to go ahead and go to the next slide. That Water Quality Protection Zone Ordinance was implemented in 2011, and I think it's one of the most special ways to preserve stormwater quality in stormwater areas in the entire state of Oklahoma. It was really revolutionary to be able to identify these polygons, these zones of where the future 100-year stormwater would be inundating. And then also to go beyond that, not only identifying, but also putting in ordinance on protecting those areas and restricting the amount of disturbance that can be done in those areas. So that is huge. We want to make sure that we emphasize that that needs to stay in place. You know, continuing the Water Quality Protection Zone Ordinance, potentially even strengthening the language to reduce the amount of clearing that can happen during construction is also something that we talked about in our Subcommittee, and that's really important for our city moving forward. Additionally, in 2013, there was a fertilizer ordinance that was implemented, and there's all kinds of, you know, you can't read all the information on this slide, but this was that brochure that I talked about that the Environmental Sustainability Group, Michelle's group, put out a few years ago, just educating the public on what is this stormwater ordinance, and what does it mean for individual property owners and residents in Norman? You know, what can we and can't we put on our lawns that is potentially harming wildlife and also the stormwater quality in the lake? So there's also been several of the CIP projects that were identified in 2009 that have been completed or that are in, that are under construction right now. The biggest one that everybody kind of remembers is the Lake McGee Project that was at the intersection of McGee and Lindsey. That area just is very flat. If you look at the topography, it's very flat, there's just kind of sinkholes that go all the way through. And so putting in stormwater conveyance that allowed that water to be drained out so that it didn't just sit there on the roads for many days at a time was a huge thing that was accomplished. There was also Brookhaven Creek Project where we replaced the culvert under Main Street that conveyed Brookhaven Creek. It actually washed out the day that the contractor, so the city had mobilized a contractor, the day that the contractor showed up on site, that bridge washed out. Thankfully, no one was hurt, no one was injured, but you know, we were there and ready to, when I say we, I'm talking about the city, the city was ready to implement a solution. They had anticipated this being a problem, and they were ready with a design. And not only this conveying that water under Main Street, but also providing a green infrastructure solution for the stream downstream. You can see a lot of green in that picture, and this was intentional to be able to provide some of that riparian buffer there for that stream. Another one that is very visible in Norman is the Imhoff Creek under Lindsey Street. So Lindsey Street Project was another great one in the city. Another huge thing that's happened since 2009 was the Engineering Design Criteria was updated. And so there are several things in the Engineering Design Criteria update of 2023 that were changed. First of all, in Section 5000, which kind of gives you the engineering design, like the numbers on how you have to design your stormwater infrastructure, one of the big things was saying that for new construction, a bridge or a large culvert has to have freeboard, which means some distance between the 100-year water surface elevation or the, you know, like the storm that defines insurance rates in the city. You know, having one foot of freeboard from that to the lowest structural member of the bridge. And so that just really preserves the existing, wherever the existing floodplain is today, that means that a bridge that's installed is going to have to basically preserve that entire floodplain. They're not going to be constraining that flow and making it raise the water surface elevations on the upstream side that would potentially cause more flooding for residents, and it preserves that kind of slower water going through the bridge. There was also Section 6000 that kind of defines some of the construction requirements, some of the ways that stormwater quality is preserved in construction. And then Section 7000 was really a new thing for the Engineering Design Criteria that was updated in 2023. And Section 7000 defines these low-impact development design criteria, and it provides a guide for developers to implement low-impact development, these stormwater best management practices. But one of the things that we found during our research of this is that those recommendations, those design criteria are currently recommendations, they're not required. And in the 2009 Master Plan, it was clearly noted that those should be a requirement for developments that go specifically into the Lake Thunderbird watershed. And so that's something that we'll talk about here in a minute. That's something that we're going to move forward as a recommendation of requiring stormwater quality treatment for developments specifically, well, throughout the city, but specifically in the Lake Thunderbird watershed. So another thing, I can't talk about all the great things that went into all of these plans, but there were several studies, stormwater quality, specific studies that have been presented and presented to council and adopted since 2009. The Lake Thunderbird Total Maximum Daily Load Study, the Stormwater Management Plan, this is confusing because SWMP is the same initials for the Management Plan and the Master Plan, but Stormwater Management Plan is really focused on stormwater quality and how do we maintain stormwater quality in the city to achieve the goals of pollutant reduction? There's a stormwater policy manual that was developed and really outlines the ways that, the things that the stormwater program is designed to implement, the things that Jason does for his day-to-day work. And then Bishop Creek Watershed Base Plan, that was a stormwater quality-focused item as well. And there's also been all kinds of education that Michelle's group has done, and there's been a huge push and a really valuable push for stormwater education and environmental education throughout the city. My kids love going to these things, they go and they learn about monarch butterflies and how what we do with our stormwater in the city could potentially affect butterflies. And so things like that, you know, understanding why fertilizer, and you know, putting flyers and mailers to understand why fertilizer could potentially harm our stormwater conveyance. This slide kind of shows the number of educational opportunities that have been provided since, even in the last four to five years here. So that's what's been done, that was recommended in 2009, that's currently being done, and we want to make sure that y'all continue to implement that, but now we want to talk about what's left to do. So we showed the slide that showed the stormwater capital projects that have been completed, and the yellow dots that are in this one that are kind of behind those stars are the ones that were identified in 2009 that have not been completed yet. So there's still a lot to do. And there's obviously still funding required to complete these stormwater projects. We talked about a stormwater general obligation bond back in 2018 that was, did not pass the vote, but that would be the way that stormwater capital projects are paid for, is either through a general budget, through stormwater budget, or through a general obligation bond. And so that's something that we've got to continue talking about. The stormwater utility fee pays for things that are stormwater maintenance, so the existing infrastructure maintenance, as well as stormwater quality implementation. So those two things are not necessarily capital projects, but those are the items that would be paid for through a stormwater utility. And then, you know, if we can think about any of these alternative funding sources, these are what we want council to be able to kind of work together with our stormwater team, stormwater city staff, to be able to fund these requirements that have been identified through, you know, so many studies throughout the years. So stormwater utility fee, a geo bond, and then also stormwater projects could be added to other projects around town, transportation projects that we talked about on Tuesday, parks projects, there's lots of open space in parks that could be utilized for slowing down that water, providing detention, you know, throughout, through the housing aspect of our plan, you know, implementing stormwater quality requirements, stormwater quality treatment requirements for those new subdivisions would also be something that could be providing improvement for stormwater in Norman. So this is a slide that kind of shows, there was a great document that was put together in 2018 by the Stormwater Citizen Committee that was put together to kind of promote that stormwater utility and help the public understand why the stormwater utility was required. They identified costs of the stormwater quality and infrastructure maintenance and operations. Those costs from 2018 obviously are inflated by 40 to 60% at this point. So that gap in the general, you know, the difference between the general, the deficit there basically has increased by 40 to 60% based on the inflation that we've seen since 2018. So just keep that in mind, we had a $4 million deficit then, that deficit has only grown since 2018. Okay, so what is new for 2025? What are the things that we're recommending? And I'm going to actually start out with our goals. So we updated the goals from the 2009 Master Plan, which were kind of really boiled down. We wanted to make those more specific and contextualized to Norman. So I'm just going to read these, bear with me as I read them, but I want y'all to hear the things that we really focused on throughout this process. So protecting the runoff water quality, contributing to Lake Thunderbird and the Canadian River, to preserve the natural and beneficial uses of these water potties. Provide an understanding of the flood risk to citizens in our community, and continue to implement and enhance the capital improvement program to help reduce flooding risks. Enhance and preserve the ecological character of the unurbanized areas of Norman. Restore and rehabilitate riparian areas in the urbanized areas of Norman while expanding recreational access and opportunities that support ecological health of these areas. Continue to prioritize community awareness and education regarding flood risk, stormwater quality, city infrastructure, and individual responsibilities to preserve and maintain both natural and man-made stormwater resources. And then prioritize stormwater projects using a transparent process that includes collaboration with all stakeholders. So those were the updated goals of our Master Plan. And so all of our recommendations kind of tie into these goals. We have, you know, dozens of recommendations in our actual Stormwater Master Plan, we've kind of boiled those down to the key recommendations here. And these, you know, these are in addition to continuing that capital improvements program. You know, those projects that were identified in 2009, those also need to be continued. We basically kept the recommendations, any recommendations that have been completely implemented since 2009, we removed those from the text, but we also kept, you know, all the ones that were still relevant to today. But requiring runoff quality treatment in new developments, we're going to talk about that a little bit more on the next slide. Preventing reduction of the WQPZ widths in the 2045 reserve area, and that requires understanding of what that 2045 reserve area is. Well, I can bring up a map about that here in a minute, but basically, in the area that's been set aside for restricting the type of development that can happen between now and 2045, within that area, not allowing that WQPZ width to be reduced from its original stream plan corridor width. Installing additional water quality monitoring stations in locations that would help us provide, understand a baseline stormwater quality before we start seeing development into these areas that go into Lake Thunderbird watershed, as well as major transportation projects. And then creating an incentive program for projects that exceed stormwater management requirements. So thinking through a way to incentivize developers or engineers that are working on urbanizing these areas throughout Norman, finding out a way that we can incentivize implementing, going beyond the minimum stormwater requirements in our city. Continuing to regularly update that Engineering Design Criteria, the science is continually changing. We met with NOAA a few weeks ago to talk about what's called Atlas 15, which kind of redefines, then updates the precipitation estimates and the way that precipitation estimates are developed, beyond even what was put in the 2023 Engineering Design Criteria. So that is, you know, imminently changing within the next year or two. And so things like that will need to be updated within the Engineering Design Criteria as we move forward. And then encouraging low-impact development whenever accessory structures are permitted. So, you know, as we incrementally develop in core Norman or in the urbanized area of Norman, primarily the Canadian River watershed, we already have a lot of problems in that area. So as we add more impervious area, how are we encouraging that low-impact development? How are we encouraging slowing down that runoff as it moves downstream so that it doesn't continue to exacerbate those problems? So I'd said that we would talk a little bit more about that stormwater quality treatment. Essentially, in 2009, it was recommended that a minimum of half an inch of stormwater quality, or that first, what we call the first flush of rainfall, that first half of an inch of precipitation that falls, calculating a volume from that and using that as what's called a water quality volume. And so a water quality volume would need to be treated, and there's already developers and engineers that are doing this in Norman. That could be a combination of many different treatment methods. It can be slowing water down through rain barrels, bioswales, things that are like small-scale at the household level, but it also could be putting in a series of ponds that continue to allow that sediment to settle out and treat that water as it moves downstream. And so we're recommending that in the East Norman, and East Norman as well as the 2045 Development Reserve Area, if you've seen the land use character amount that's been developed as part of this process, within that area, we were recommending that one and a half inches of that first flush be treated for stormwater quality. And then we have extended that, Zone 1 is what we're calling it for East Norman, we've extended that up into the major tributaries of the Lake Thunderbird, which includes Little River, I'm going from north to south, so Little River, Rock Creek, and then there's a tributary to Dave Blue Creek, and then Dave Blue Creek itself. So that Zone 1 goes up into those riparian areas, and then it's a 1,000-foot buffer off of those. And then Zone 2 would be one inch treated, and that goes 1,000-foot beyond the original Zone 1 buffer. So 2,000 feet from the streamlines is treating the water quality volume of up to one and a half inches, but a minimum of one inch. And then everything else in Norman, we would recommend requiring the half an inch of runoff volume be treated. And so that can be accomplished through some of those more small-scale implementations. We see it at the library where those, you know, those detention ponds that were installed outside of the library that, they're vegetated, they slow down that water, they capture some of those pollutants. Rain barrels also do similar things. And so, you know, we want to encourage development and incremental development, increasing development in the area of town that's further from Lake Thunderbird. We want to make sure that if development is moving closer to Lake Thunderbird in those streams that are directly impacting Lake Thunderbird, that, you know, these are all recommendations, but that those recommended water quality volumes are truly making an impact on that runoff as it approaches the lake. We also recommended several studies as part of this Stormwater Master Plan update. A flood warning system is going to increase our community rating system with FEMA, which is another topic that we don't have time to dive too deep into, but that's already in progress, the city's already been working on that. The stormwater infrastructure inventory, mapping all of our infrastructure in town, also taking that a step beyond just mapping it, but also doing a condition assessment so that we can anticipate things like what happened on Boyd Street this year where a stormwater, an old stormwater pipe that hardly anyone even knew was there started to collapse. It causes, you know, major, it just interrupts the flow of, traffic interrupts the flow of what the stormwater team is doing on a daily basis, and that has to be addressed immediately. If we can anticipate those things in advance, that would be huge for the city to reduce future costs. We also recommend a low-impact development optimization study, as well as a geomorphology and sediment transfer study within Lake Thunderbird watershed. And I see both of those studies working together to optimize the types of low-impact development that are recommended, you know? Is our check dams going to be needed within our streams as we continue to, as we continue to develop into these watersheds that currently don't have any impervious area? Are detention ponds going to be best, are retention ponds going to be best? You know, how can we optimize these low-impact development recommendations that are in Section 7000 of the Engineering Design Criteria? These studies could really, and Oklahoma City has even done this within the Lake Thunderbird watershed of Oklahoma City, they've said, what are the optimal low-impact development methods that could be used in this area? So we also recommend rain-on-mesh hydrologic modeling, hydraulic modeling where appropriate. So that's for what we call pluvial flooding, which is exactly, like Lake McGee was a great example of pluvial flooding. That just means something caused by ponding of rainfall that is not necessarily associated with a stream flooding. So a stream flooding would be called riverine, rainfall flooding is called pluvial. So this rain-on-mesh hydrologic modeling, hydraulic modeling helps identify where those problem areas are that are beyond the streams, beyond those FEMA-mapped floodplains. And there's a few places in the city that would be appropriate for that. And then also updating the regulatory floodplain mapping for the city, understanding where the floodplains actually are so that we can focus our attention on, you know, where are the homes that are going to be continually flooded? And how can we update these maps to represent some of the things that have changed within the last 15 years or whenever the map was last updated? For example, there's a huge detention pond at the airport, Westimer Airport, that was not included in the last FEMA map update, that really changes the flow patterns downstream along Merkel Creek through Main Street and 24th and everything downstream of there. So those are our recommended studies, and that's really the conclusion of my presentation here, and I'd love to just have open discussion and hear any questions that you guys have about our Stormwater Master Plan.
Thank you. Regarding the WQPZ, was there discussion about whether the council should consider increasing it? When it was first passed, I think there was a recommended foot, feet, and it was not adopted as recommended, and there was a shorter distance that was adopted.
Right.
There was contention about, you know, property rights and things like that, so.
Right. I'll try to answer that as best I can, but also I want to give the opportunity for staff who has been actually implementing I'll I'll try to answer that as best I can, but also I want to give the opportunity for staff who has been actually implementing this to answer as well. There was discussion about that. There was discussion about should we require, you know, wider offset from the stream bank or reducing the amount of alternative width that can be developed? And really, the way that it's been implemented today is is working pretty well from what we understand. We do want to 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 eliminate the opportunity to reduce that width within the development reserve area. So generally around Forty Eighth Avenue east, about the section, the half section line past that is where the the development reserve area starts. So we would, we would recommend that the WQPZ not be allowed to be reduced within that area to preserve those riparian areas. But generally where the WQPZ has been implemented today, from what staff convey to us is that it's been working well, that it's a kind of a good balance between being an onerous requirement for developers and also still providing that protection for streams.
I was curious with the recommended studies and ones in progress, the stormwater infrastructure inventory. Where that fits in with developing a stormwater utility fee? I know we didn't really get into the weeds on that, but plans for exploring how to get into that?
So I think that we are doing that. We we did get a camera truck and a crew to run that truck. It doesn't run quite as much as we'd like it to, but they are out doing that inventory today. We are looking at other opportunities to bring in consultants to help us get that done quicker, but we're getting that done slowly over time. And that would be something that would allow us at some point in the future to be able to say that from the what we've seen so far, thirty percent of our stormwater system needs repairing. I'm making that number up. I don't, maybe ten, maybe thirty, I don't know. And that we could use that to say, so based on that, that would give us an estimated amount of what we think it would take over a ten, twenty year period. And we could use that to help us formulate a stormwater utility, the need for funding that we could then break down for a stormwater utility fee.
We need a study to develop that fee structure, like, you know, how we have to tell us come in and say you need to we're consultants, like, how does that work?
Well, and last time, you know, they they did that. There actually was a group that came in and helped with that last time. And we'd probably look at recommending something like that again. They did come in and there was a lot of meetings that were held where there was discussion if they could make a change. If you change X, what does Y become? And then if you change Y, then what? And it was, it was really interesting that it was a, they had it all in a spreadsheet so you could plug and chug. And they could literally give updated numbers. The first time we did it, I would leave the room, I'd go back to my computer, spend about two days updating it and then bring it back. This time they had it in a much more, in a format that was much more pliable where they could do that. But I do think that if we were going to move towards a stormwater utility, again, bringing in a a consultant that could help us with that that fee and help us look at what and and part of that is we'd want to look at what are our, you know, surrounding communities, communities of our type so we could go back in and look at all that again, just like they do with the the water and wastewater.
So I'm hearing basically we would need to complete the stormwater infrastructure inventory and maybe look at a consultant or something to develop this fee and then have like a public education on it and hopefully bring it to a vote.
I I don't know that we need to complete the inventory to get to that step because that's going to be a a fairly long process. But I think that as we gather that information, we can take the information we have and use that as a as one of the factors that we plug in.
So could I just make a point, Scott? Having been chair of the last stormwater citizen committee that did study the fee for eighteen months, you know, and went to the last vote. You know, we did have a great model where we could plug and play numbers that I think Freeze and Nichols built for us and what's this going to cost? And how do we do that? And we looked at it for months and months and months. I think it was supposed to be a three month process and it ended up being almost eighteen month process. You know, in Norman, to be honest with you, it's the actual cost of what we need to do the work. And then it's the political side of what's acceptable to the residents and what they're willing to pay. And that is a struggle that I'll tell you today we will still encounter. So you might find out from your stormwater inventory that you have, you know, tens of millions of dollars of stuff that needs to be replaced. And we need to generate this much money per year to do what we need to do, right? To properly maintain, to replace as we need, you know, all of those things. And then it likely wouldn't be politically feasible to the voters. So that's ju, that hasn't changed. That hasn't changed since two thousand sixteen. It didn't change in two thousand eighteen when we voted on it, and it's still a reality today. So I just think any current or future council needs to continue to remember that. We had a five dollar flat fee last time for residential is what we proposed and a G and a general obligation bond for capital projects. Neither one of them passed. And so does that mean only two dollar flat fee would pass? This isn't something this committee was tasked with having these in-depth discussions, but about four to five of our members were on that twenty eighteen committee. So, you know, we were all very, and Bill Scanlon's here, he was, and Judith and Brett Kavaness and a lot of people sitting in this room were on that committee. So I think those realities still exist, and I think it's a conversation we're still going to have to have. But if five dollars wasn't acceptable in twenty eighteen, does that mean only two dollars would be acceptable in twenty twenty seven? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing out these questions to be thought about because the 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 need is very different than the reality.
And I do think the conversation has maybe shifted in a more favorable direction. You know, we've heard complaints about OTA.
I do love that people want to protect the lake. I think that's fabulous.
Yeah, it seems like maybe from two thousand eighteen to now, we could have hit a critical mass. And I did see in the presentation, there was feedback about what our residents think about stormwater now. So I don't know if that compares with they thought in two thousand eighteen, but generally pretty positive. Like, we need to do something about it is the feedback.
At least focus on protection.
So I just wanted to make that point. It's still a reality, as you all know, that we're kind of around in those days and understand it. And it's still a serious discussion to be had.
Is the turnpike also just came up in your committee about, you know, because we've had to like work with lines that may or may not move on this map and what that means as far as impacts in transportation.
So we operated the same as the land use committee, which was, we had it on our map in the routes that were released originally because we've, you know, we, nobody has gotten any change. We felt like we needed to have them represented there. But we didn't specifically make recommendations based on where that turnpike may or may not be. We were really look at, looking at focusing on protecting Lake Thunderbird. And you could, that's, you could throw the turnpike in there and that's still, how do we protect Lake Thunderbird, right? So if it's there or not, it's still the issue. So, no, we didn't have in-depth discussions about turnpike and and routes. But we did kind of have it on our map for discussion. You know, in in that, in that may.
It could be an impact.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Scott, that was going to be my question on the timeline to get to the point of determining the stormwater utility. So it's approximately eighteen months. Was that, was that an eighteen month process?
Well, in the past, it was. That the the previous committee, that's how long they they met and worked with council and public meetings and to to come to a final decision on what that fee could be. So, I mean.
Since you all have gone through that process, do you think that that would take less time?
I do.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to speak for Public Works and whatever they want to do, I support, but I don't know that it needs to be studied to death again. I mean, I think we got to update some numbers for the work that needs to be done, but I don't, you know, I don't know that it needs to be studied to death again. It's pretty still current information. A lot of those projects, most of them still exist and need to be done.
And they're bigger. There was, there was kind of line plan, lined out plans and costs associated with those that were identified in two thousand eighteen as part of that stormwater citizen committee that those, you know, the work of identifying those tasks is already, is already there. There may be some things that need to be added that to that list, but.
So if we wanted to pursue that again, we could build on that, revisit that and anticipated timeline if we wanted to address that and bring it to a vote of people.
Yeah, that that's a discussion that we could have and, you know, obviously, you know, a lot of that be driven by what the desire of council would be on the timeframe. You know, last time it wasn't intended to be eighteen months, it just kind of evolved. It kind of just more time was needed, more requests were made, more study was done. So, you know, we we could start with a a timeframe that everybody agrees upon and we may determine we need to add to that. That would just be a decision that we made as as we were moving forward.
So if council wanted to pursue this, do you, with twelve months, a twelve month timeframe to put it on the ballot, do you think that would be reasonable?
We we could start there. I I think a lot of that's just going to, again, depending on what, you know, as as we get public input as, you know, how many, how much public input do we want to gather, how many meetings do we want to have? And then a lot of times that may be that we've, you know, determined that there may need to be another public meeting to follow up with that. How many, you know, how many reports back to council? There's a lot that's going to go into that. So I think, you know, you'd start with the timeframe, but it may have to adjust. And we just go with what what the goal would be and start from there and then build.
All right.
participated in twenty five of them.
Fifty eight last time.
I might also suggest too that we could bring that up in council retreat this summer with the new council and get everybody on board. You know, moving in that direction.
We did loosely discuss it in one of our, this subcommittee's meetings, even though we weren't tasked with it.
Right.
And we kind of relived, oh, last time it was five dollars residential and most of the committee was like, let's try four dollars, like flat fee for residential. And then maybe some sort of tiers for commercial because I mean, I'm not, it's not an official recommendation of ours. It was a loose discussion that we had in a meeting. But everybody in the room was like, yeah, five dollars didn't work, let's try four. That's that's less than a cup of coffee, right? Just getting it on the books is is now a massive hurdle that that we face. And no, that wouldn't come close to paying for what we need.
Oh, I know.
But you you get it on the books, you show goodwill, you get some projects done, you build trust, and then you go from there. So. But it's more than zero. It exists as a utility, which it doesn't now.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not telling you that's what you should do. I'm just saying that was our discussion in the room. It's not an official recommendation of ours. I mean, a big recommendation is we got to have a utility. I mean, that's there for sure, so.
One of our other recommendations was providing an incentivization structure for implementing these stormwater qualities, low impact development. And I think having a stormwater utility fee provides a means for doing that incentivization. So you could say if a development you know, provides more low impact development or better, or, you know, it goes beyond that stormwater quality, that water quality volume treatment, then maybe all the residents in that neighborhood get some discount on their stormwater utility fee or something like that. It just provides another means for incentivization of that of that low impact development.
That's a great idea.
Any further comment or questions?
You all got in your packet our land use chapter of the stormwater. So you didn't get our entire stormwater master plan update because nobody, and I almost brought the old one just to like for show and tell. But I didn't feel like carrying it in. So anyway, it's really complicated how we've implemented the old with the new in the overall update. But that chapter that you got in your packet is a really great summary of our recommendations, more in depth that we discussed than we discussed today. And it's it's high level, but it's good information. So I just, I just want to, and every one of these up, plan updates has one of these chapters. So that's kind of a a a high level for you to kind of easily take in what's being recommended out of each subcommittee. And that's what we provided to you in our packets for further studying, you know. And we're always available to, I mean, I'm always available or
Okay.
if you have more questions, I'm happy to chat.
Okay. Anything further, comments, questions? Well, I really appreciate the work that everybody's been putting into this and I look forward to the total product coming forward and the rest of council seeing it as well. So thank you very much for all your work, everybody. And there's nothing further. This meeting is adjourned.